I call this meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. It is Monday, February 11th, 2013. Dr. Richardson, there was a few items in the consent grouping and then a long-term care insurance piece?
Yes, basically you'll see in your consent grouping several personal items, including appointments, increase, decrease, and change in assignment, and one resignation. There's also a document for you in terms of the possibilities of purchase for board members of long-term care insurance. This is coming through Education Financial Services, which is affiliated with Teachers' Association. And Molly, I know, has checked this one out. And I think you'll have an opportunity, if you want to, to come to one of the meetings and hear about it and determine whether this might be something you'd be interested in.
Very good. Well, if there's no objection for the items in the consent grouping, we'll add those as we move forward in the agenda. All right, we are ready to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. Is there anyone here who is interested in addressing the board? Yes? Please? Okay. So, I'd like to remind the public, this is an opportunity, a listening opportunity by the board and not an opportunity for debate. And so when you come to the podium, if you could just say the name, if you represent a group and your address, and limit your remarks to three minutes.
(inaudible) go together. Representing Sibley, my name is Paula Bargary.
I'm Carleen Sherman. And we arrived this evening just to talk in favor of iPads and getting them in the hands of students in our school district. I just wanted to share a little bit with my own personal experience so far this year as a teacher in special education, how much of a benefit this technology has been for myself and for my students. First of all, it's been extremely motivating. My kids are much more excited to practice their math facts by crashing meteors together against the clock than by me giving them paper and pencil and setting a timer. It's given us a ton of new opportunities. There are apps for all sorts of skill practice areas, which is vital for my students with disabilities. Math facts, grammar, letter sounds, phonics, spelling, it goes on and on. It's enhanced our social skills instruction by giving us the tools to do video modeling and create social stories and take it around the building wherever we are. It's enhanced my data tracking by, there are certain apps that can help me to do that, or I can just have things right on here with notability, or with access to Dropbox and Google Apps. On that same note, whether I'm pushed into a classroom or I'm in my own classroom, this device can go with me. So I can take notes of my observations of students and then have it back in the classroom and not have to shuffle through lots of papers. It's all organized in one place. Within the general education classroom, it helps our students with special needs to access the curriculum in a more similar manner. Because when everybody is reading something on an iPad, they can just be plugged in and listening to a book instead of having to be hooked up to something else and looking different than the other kids. This technology already has enhanced my teaching experience and my students. Not an hour of the day goes by that I don't have a use for it in my small group settings. So, I think it is something that will continue to benefit our students in the future. So I wanted to share my support of it.
Just to wrap up, in the mainstream class setting, I too have felt like it really levels the playing field for all different types of students. I'm most excited about having either a handful of them or the one-to-one correspondence that hopefully will be in our future in the elementary school and all the way up. I've, just the ease of it, as I've heard Matt say, in other times, this is a game changer, simply because the battery lasts all day. And so, we can use it all day long in every curriculum area. It's so user-friendly. And those are just some things that have not happened in the past. So, just very, very much in support of the iPad. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packets the minutes from January 28th, 2013. Moved by Noel, seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. On to announcements and recognition. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, we have several of those tonight. First of all, welcome to members of the Mayor's Youth Council. And I'm guessing those smiling faces right out there are members of the Mayor's Youth Council. My understanding, one of the council's goals this year is to increase youth awareness of local issues, both at the city and at the school level. So they're here tonight to listen to our discussions on the school calendar and on transformational technology, so they can boil it down into small snippets.
Okay.
So I hope all of you who know got your snippets squared away there. So they can also then put those on their website and Facebook page to provide an opportunity to educate youth in the community about the things that are going on with both the city and the school district. Jenny Fink, a Vista that works for the Mayor's Youth Council, I know is also an individual that is, I think is here this evening. Hi Jenny.
Hi.
Okay. And she is the, again, the Vista that works with the Mayor's Youth Council in their work. So, again, welcome to all of you and thank you for being here and becoming the translators of what adults say and what students hear. In a good way, we hope. Okay. Next, the Northfield High School Music Listening Team finished as state music listening champions at the February 1st competition that was held at Hogsburg College. The team of three, winning the state championship, consists of Northfield High School sophomores, Henry and William Beamers, and Nicholas Pelletier. The music listening team is coached by Karen Madsen. So, again, congratulations to the state champion. On January the 26th, 68 Northfield High School music students participated in the Region One AA Solo and Ensemble Contest at Lakeville South High School. Students performed solos and/or ensemble pieces. Our music students shined, bringing home 51 superior ratings and 17 excellent ratings. Few highlights include the Best in Sight winners, Miles Broski with the clarinet solo, Eve Graybo with a violin solo, Salvin Ohara-Hambolt with a bass, excuse me, bass solo, Salvin Ohara-Hambolt, and Anika Hodl for a vocal duet, and the Chamber Singers for the vocal ensemble. And again, congratulations to all of those students for their great accomplishments. Also, on January 24th, Northfield Middle School hosted a spelling bee featuring the top 17 district spellers, competing for the opportunity to participate in the Regional Spelling Bee in Rochester, which will be held tomorrow. The winners of our first three places will move on to the regional level. Their third place, Anna Weber, grade six, daughter Christopher and Deanne Weber; second place, Jackson Hillman, grade eight, son of Mary and Matt Hillman; and champion speller, Hannah Paz, grade seven, daughter of Karen and Stephen Paz. Also, we'd like to congratulate our own Bridgewater Principal, Nancy Antoin, who received the Division Leadership Award at the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association, Mespa, banquet last Thursday night. Nancy is also the division president for Mespa. Congratulations to Nancy.
Great. Board members, any other announcements or recognition? Julie?
I just wanted to recognize all the Benjamin Bus drivers who've just done an outstanding job in the past few weeks getting our kids to school safely. The roads have been nothing short of very challenging, and they always keep the safety of our students as top priority, and they just do an outstanding job, and we really, we appreciate all that they do.
Especially when some of them are up at 4:00 a.m., when I am out chasing down the roads. So if you notice me start to nod off here, between the two of you, somebody elbow me, please. But, again, they are always out there checking. We're able to make decisions about what to do usually before 5:00 a.m. And I think that helps our community in terms of knowing how to plan their day, because they know we've been out and we've been checking roads. So, again, thanks to all the folks at Benjamin Bus, but as you said, the drivers are, do a fantastic job of caring for our kids.
Very good. Other announcements or recognition? We are ready to move on to our first item for discussion report, which is the 2013-2014 school calendar. Board members, you had in your packet a handout with the 2013-2014 school calendar.
Okay, and you'll see that in the 2013-14 calendar, we're looking at a traditional calendar that will be an after Labor Day start. This is very similar to the calendar that we shared with you earlier as we were looking at options for a balanced calendar last month. The one, or actually the two adjustments that we've made to this calendar, and after reviewing them with President Mark Thornton from the Association, determined to move forward with those minor changes. Those include the idea that we would be looking at four days of teacher workshop or workdays prior to the start of the school year this year. So the 26th, 27th, 28th, and 29th would be teacher workshop days. And the idea being that we have a number of staff members that would like to have at least one of those days be used for student assessment. And so, we will give them opportunities during that four-day period to identify times for assessment of students, especially at the elementary level. They feel that helps them to really get a leg up on doing initial assessment in reading and mathematics, so that they're able to take off running right away with reading groups and math groups. Also, the other adjustment that we've made is that we have looked at the new teacher in-service, and we have positioned that in-service for the 19th and 20th of August. And the reason for that is that right now, our intention will be to host the summer ELC trip to Eagle Bluff on the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd. That allows our number-one guide, Mr. Jeff Peschta, to be available and to be involved in that activity. And so, we'll look at the 19th and 20th for those new teacher in-service. And you'll notice also, that's an extension. In the past, we've typically just done one day of additional pre-service for teachers who are new to the district. I think our belief is with all of the things that are occurring with the district, and especially depending on how things go as we go through the evening tonight on technology, having extra time for those staff members to work with curriculum and to work with various instructional pieces, I think will help them be in a better position to get started. Beyond that, however, the rest of the calendar is as it was presented to you last month, and also as it was presented to you last year. And that would be looking at the winter vacation being a full two-week period, mainly because of the dates that both Christmas and New Year's fall on, which is midweek. And so, we're looking at the full two weeks, beginning on the 23rd of December through the 3rd of January for the winter break. And then, we're looking at the spring break again on the week of the 24th of March. At this point, then, we will look at the last day of school being June the 6th. And that will be a shortened day with a two-hour early dismissal on that last day. Otherwise, I think this calendar is going to look very familiar to you in comparison to the day calendars. The only other thing you'll notice that's a little different than anything that we've done before, you notice that on November the 8th, there's a special marking indicating that the middle school will not have school on Friday, November the 8th. And the reason for that is the National Middle School Conference is being held in Minneapolis-St. Paul this year. First time that I can remember that in all the years that the conference has been held. And, obviously, I think it's a very great opportunity for all of our middle school staff to be able to attend and participate in the conference. And so, our belief was that it was the right thing to do, to basically open that up so that all of the staff could attend and be involved, and come back with, again, good information in looking at new school strategies and approaches. So, otherwise, the calendar remains the same, 174 student contact days, total of 187 contract days. Everything else, basically, the same as it has been in previous years. So, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise, we'd be looking at coming back in two weeks for your approval.
Board members, questions? Carrie?
The middle school day, is the expectation that all staff would go?
The expectation is that's a contract day, and so our expectation would be that every middle school teacher would attend. And in fact, I know they would be looking at using a bus or some other type of strategy so that they could get everybody up there together.
It's a great opportunity.
Yeah, it's a fantastic opportunity, again, one that just does not come around. It may almost be a once-in-a-lifetime, in terms of timing to get here.
Other questions? All right, so we will be looking at this next board meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. We are ready to move on to our first item for individual action, which is a resolution. And I would remind you, board members, this is a resolution that comes up at the same time every year, so this is nothing unusual. Dr. Richardson, do you want to make any remarks?
Sure. Again, this is simply the resolution that begins, or gives us the ability, that in case we need to make adjustments in programming and staffing for next year, that it puts us in a position to go ahead and move forward with that at a later date. And typically, the reasons that would trigger this would be a significant reduction in numbers of students at a particular grade level, where we might have the need for fewer teachers at a particular grade level, or a significant change in the number of students signing up for a particular set of classes that might drive the reduction in terms of hours. At this point, we're not looking at any kind of program reductions unless those reductions would be triggered by enrollment reductions or interest reduction.
All right. So, the superintendent's recommendation is to motion to authorize the administration to make the recommendations for additions and reductions in program and for adding and discontinuing positions. Is there a motion? Moved by Rob. Seconded?
No, seconded.
Seconded by Ann. Any discussion? Okay, and this is a roll call vote?
Correct.
Stratton?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Bosso?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Ready to move on to our second item for individual action, which is the Technology Transformation Proposal.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Matt to go ahead and step to the podium, because I know he has some additional pieces of information. But again, as all of you are aware, this is something that we've been looking at now for almost a year. And we have presented this to the board on a number of occasions. We've had a number of those interesting iPad minutes that always take just a little longer than a minute. But it's also something where I think it has been very, very thoroughly vetted in our community and with you, in terms of giving you the information you need to consider this particular proposal. Again, our recommendation tonight will be to move forward with the Technology Transformation Proposal, and to go ahead and look at the leasing of a large number of iPads for the use of our students in grades six through 12, and also in grades K through 5. And also, the continuation of the types of professional development opportunities that have really made this an effective opportunity for our teachers this year, and we believe, we'll do the same thing next year for our students. So, again, we want to share just a brief review, so that you've got those numbers in front of you, and then we would be very happy to answer additional questions that you might have.
Yeah, I just wanted to run through the proposal, just a couple, it will be just a few minutes. And then I also think it's fair, would be good to show you tonight the results of our online engagement effort. We've just got a couple of pieces that Griff Wigley can help me out with, in terms of any questions you might have about that new, that new exercise that we are working on this time around. And I think we learned a lot, which was really good. So, just to review the proposal, you've seen this a number of times already, I know, but just that we'd be looking at one-to-one using the iPad to at Northfield High School, the Area Learning Center, and Northfield Middle School. We're looking at instituting a sliding scale annual insurance fee for those students who can take those devices home with a $100 family cap. We proposed a pod-based approach, using the iPad Mini at the elementary schools. Again, approximately one device per about three and a half students, mostly put in grade-level classrooms. As you remember, as Carleen spoke, our special education classrooms have had iPads for a couple of years now, actually, to support the needs of students in those rooms. So, we're not looking at putting any of these particular devices in special education, because they already have some. But these pods would be generally located in our general education classrooms, where, again, special ed students in the mainstream would certainly be able to access them in that piece as well. Just to be clear, that we're focused on the mostly general education classrooms at that point. Remember, just in addition to the lease cost, we'd be looking at budgeting $12 per device for apps. We'd be looking at budgeting for an average of three textbooks to begin with, per secondary student, $14.99 a textbook. $4 per device for a mobile device management system. $8 per student for a learning management system. And recall that the actual hardware lease, which included the hardware that we're talking about in the cases, we anticipate to cost $336,954 per year over a three-year period. The remainder of those other pieces, the apps, the textbooks, mobile device management, learning management system, et cetera, around $172,000 a year. We're building an approximately 8% contingency for the proposal that we would say that would be no more than $550,000 per year over the next three years, including the contingency plan. And just recall that we've gone a little bit different on insurance, in terms of, we started talking about Apple Care with this, as we had gone on, and then we have adopted looking at a self-insurance strategy, where the student insurance fee would cover a lot of that at the complete replacement of 199 devices at the secondary buildings. And we would actually intentionally set aside $25 per device at the elementary, which would completely replace about 11% of those devices. And again, those numbers are well within what we've seen in other schools who are already at that point, or at this point, in such an initiative. So, that's the proposal piece, just to review those numbers. And then I wanted to show you some of the reports that we've had from the online engagement piece. I just think it's worth your while to see it. And I should have, I apologize, I should have had paper copies for you in the packet. I can email this out to you afterwards. Thought you were giving me the cutoff sign, Griff. You're just adjusting your glasses, okay.
We don't do paper anymore.
That's what we're working on. So I just, I would like to take this opportunity to compliment Griff Wigley from Wigley &amp; Associates. He really is teaching us to fish, and using that old metaphor, so that we can use this strategy as we move forward. Very professional. We used a piece of software called Basecamp to continually communicate and document the strategies, and I think that's been very, very helpful. So there's several pieces that we'll just show you, to begin with the Google Analytics And what the Google Analytics component will show you is how many people actually came to the site. Google can take a look and say, how many unique people did you have there? How many page views, et cetera. Make this so you can see it a little bit better here. So you'll see that we had 554 visits to the iPad section of the district website with 192 unique visitors. That means that's 192 different computers, essentially, right Griff? Came to the site. They looked at 1,320 different pages, approximately 2.38 pages per visit. People spent just under an average of, just under five minutes on the site. And again, I think you'll see some other pieces here in terms of the traffic to the site. These are some of the more specific pages down below, and I'll scroll that up so that you can see it. So, remember, we did not only a blog post that allowed people to answer, put questions in and for us to interact and ask questions, and both Dr. Richardson and I engaged in that. I think there were a total of 21 posts within that particular area, something around that, those lines. Griff really helped us in terms of looking at that piece, something that we had not done before. We also did a live chat, which was very interesting, first time I've ever done that. And thankfully, my typing skills kept up with Griff's, that was good. And then we did the live webinar, which was another interesting piece, and we had a hand, a small group of people who participated in that. These are things that are all in addition to the face-to-face meetings, of course, that we had. Those are the two major online engagement components. Griff, go ahead.
Yeah, one of the things that people don't realize when you have a, the reason I profiled this blog discussion thread, because it really was only four people, four different people that chimed in with different questions or comments. But because you can't see the observers, the tendency is to think, only four people showed up. In reality, you had over 100, 150 people actually checking that blog discussion thread all the time. And so, it's kind of equivalent, when you have an audience of people, only 2% or 3% of the people are willing to stand up and ask a question, because of fear of public speaking. So, this important piece here of doing the analytics is to actually show you that there was a much larger audience for, in particular, for the blog discussion thread, even though it was just a few people were chugging in with questions.
The other piece I just want to show you are the results of the straw poll that we And I think that this is important, that we had 21 people participate. So that's a small N, you know, in terms of the actual number of people who participated. But I think it does share some interesting pieces, I think, relevant to some of the other kinds of things that we heard. So the first question is, how familiar were they with the proposal? And you'll see that various people indicated that they were very familiar, somewhat familiar, vaguely familiar. And we had most people here who, you know, roughly 50% of the people, slightly more than that, said that they were very familiar with the proposal. Just more than 50% there. And then, the key thing that we looked at is, what resources did you use to try to become informed about the proposal? So, attended one or more of our meetings, attended one or more of our school board meetings, watched one of the videos, followed in the local news media, which was 100%. Everybody who participated in this poll said that they had followed the local news media on that. I think that shows that people are looking at those sites. And we had other people who subscribed to our original blog, and a handful of people. It was just under 100% of people who followed in the local news media, pretty close, 90%, excuse me. And then, people talking about they've given feedback, and obviously, the significant group there said no. We had about 30% of people who indicated they had provided some kind of feedback to the school board, either through email, or calling you, or coming to one of these meetings, And then, as we get into these next questions, we see that there's really an interesting split with lots of folks on polar opposites, in terms of how satisfied were they with our plan's vision for student learning and engagement through technology? With nearly an equal number of people saying they're very satisfied as saying very dissatisfied. So, in terms of these 21 folks, we had a handful of people who were pretty strong on both sides. In fact, it was 33% on each of those, you know, with that 18% in the middle tilting toward the somewhat dissatisfied. The thing that we didn't get to do for tonight, that's going to be interesting to dig into the data, is to cross-tab. I don't know if you had a chance to do that, Griff, to cross-tab. If, what we're trying to see is, were people, people who were more informed about the proposal, the people who indicated the different kinds of things that they had attended or read, did that influence the way that they felt about the decision-making process, or, excuse me, the proposal? And then we had a number of different questions. Go ahead, Griff.
Well, I think it's helpful with, I mean, it's easy to dismiss a straw poll like this, because it's so tiny in numbers. I'm doing one for the city of Northfield right now. At the start of the project, maybe has 70 people that have taken it so far. But really, the real use of it is to get people interested in the issues. So when you, when you're really somewhat unfamiliar, and you're faced with the straw poll at the start of the process, it makes you think, oh, oh, I guess I hadn't considered that. And so even though you're filling it out as a, basically, uninformed- And so, even though you're filling it out as basically an uninformed citizen, it tunes you up for being more engaged. And so, that, you know, if we had had more time on this project to do the online piece, you know, we would have had the straw poll up there way ahead of time and then do another one at the end. It's just kind of a better way of kind of doing the cross-tab, to see where people change. But we only had
We had a limited amount of time.
Two and a half weeks on this one. So, you know, we put it up at the beginning, but people were kind of filling it out throughout the process. And again, it was, it's my sort of technique to just get it up there and use it to get people thinking, rather than having you guys think of it as a reliable source of data.
Thanks, Griff. And I certainly wasn't trying to downplay the number 21, just in terms of the number, you know, the number of survey pieces. I just think it was important to share the number of people who participated. In this next question, "How satisfied were you with the staff training?" And again, we see a split there again, again, tending to be toward the polls of it, with 28% of people saying that they were very dissatisfied, the leading vote getter in that. But we also had 19% of the people who said none of the above, and my interpretation of that is, they just probably didn't have enough information to make a determination. We did have 23.8% of people who were very satisfied with our plan for training in terms of that, of that particular group. And I will forward you these individual answers to the questions. We tried to keep it up as long as we could so we could have as much data for you as possible. "How satisfied are you with the approach of proposing the six to 12 students having an individual device at school and at home, while grades K-5 students have four to six devices in each classroom?" We see a little bit of everything along here in terms of with 33% of folks, again, very dissatisfied with that particular component, 23.1% very satisfied. So, again, a split in terms of, at the polar opposites in terms of this, with, again, quite a few folks saying they're very dissatisfied, but also a significant number of people who responded as saying they were very satisfied. "How satisfied were you with the district spending up to $550,000 per year to fund the initiative?" And when we're talking about spending money here, we had quite a few more people who were very dissatisfied with that particular piece, saying that nearly 43% of people objected to that particular piece. But we still had that roughly around the same 30% of people who indicated that they were very satisfied with that. And then, again, we had a number of different individual responses that we can certainly share with you. Griff, would you, do you have any other pieces to share in terms of things about the straw poll that you don't think are important to share? Nothing at this time? Okay. So, we thought it was important that we shared with you that data in terms of, again, we tried to leave the stuff up as long as we particularly could so that we'd give you as much information as we had at the time. But with that, I will certainly stand for any questions, and if you have questions on either the online engagement or the number of meetings that we participated in as well.
You know, why don't we, before we get into the board discussion questions, why don't, since this is an item for individual action, why don't we have a motion on the table first before we get into discussion? So, the superenduneness recommendation is to approve the technology transformation proposal as outlined that Matt just gave you with the three-year lease of tablet computers and cases for the 2013, 14, 2015, 16 school year, including the curriculum software applications of a cost of no more than $550,000 per year. In addition, the proposal authorizes the school district to charge an insurance fee for the students in grades six through 12 who receive a tablet computer. So, is there a motion? Can I, Julie?
So moved.
Motion, okay, Julie, motion on the table, and Carrie seconded.
All right. Anne.
Just a little bit more about the survey details that maybe kind of went by me as you were talking
Sure.
Because I was also reading. And the part about evaluating the training, and, you know, what aspect of the training were easily accessible by these folks to even know what the training was? And, because I thought it was kind of interesting that there was that big, that big amount of dissatisfaction about maybe something they didn't even know training was going on. So, how do you read that?
I think that if I, the ways that people could have found out about the level of training that we provided would have been either by watching, you know, one of the school board meetings, either live or on video, which we, of course, put all those up. We tried to do it as quickly as we can after the board meeting. They could have accessed either the previous transformational technology blog that we blogged the whole summer about the training that we were doing. We moved that content over to the new blog, so that particular piece was there. We've talked about the training at nearly every public meeting that we've had. I don't want to say everyone, because I, my brain can't tell me for sure if there was one that we didn't have it as part of, though my inclination is to say we certainly talked about it at every public meeting. If we think about the other videos that we've had on, things that Dr. Richardson has shared through local media, through Page and Northfield News videos and those kinds of pieces on KYMN, where we've highlighted those components. So, those are ways people could have found out about it. So, that would be the way people could have known about it. Whether those folks or not participated in any of those, I don't have that data in front of me right now. But I do think that's where a cross-tab would be a good opportunity for us to take a look at that and determine, you know, where people, had people attended those meetings and were they able to give us the feedback based upon having known about it? And the one thing I didn't have a chance to see is, you know, sometimes it's, I found it's helpful to kind of look through the individual responses to see that, you know, was one person just completely dissatisfied with everything? And we did not have the opportunity to look through it in that great a detail. But that, my take is that, you know, it could be that people just weren't, didn't have an opportunity to engage in the different ways that we shared with them, the training pieces. It could be that they're dissatisfied with the amount of training that we provided, based on what they've heard from, or some over-the-back fence kinds of discussions. Because, you know, we do have, we did have every teacher come through our initial training, but not every teacher has to come to our weekly trainings. Those are optional, and people can choose to come to those or not. So, in terms of trying to explain or interpret that data, that's my take on it. And I don't know if anyone, Chris or Griff, you have any take on that data at all? I'd be happy to entertain that as well.
I think just for myself, again, I'm a numbers guy, and a numbers guy would say, just, I think, what Griff framed for you. The straw poll was really to develop interest. Twenty-one, an N of 21 is not a number that gives you any kind of reliable data about necessarily how any significant group of folks within our community is feeling. Even within that, you had almost a 50/50 split between people who said, "Yes, I have quite a bit of information about this," and 50% that had little or no information about it. And so, again, I really, I think it's important to do the straw poll as a strategy for helping to get people interested in thinking. I don't necessarily believe a straw poll will give you any kind of strong data to use as compared to using, again, a random sample poll or something that actually gives you the ability to basically extrapolate the numbers out to the larger population. So, I think we just need to take it with the appropriate kind of grain of salt as we take a look at the data.
Griff.
Which is why we didn't even ask questions like, you know, "Do you live in Northville? Do you have children in the school?" Do, you know, those kinds of things that a typical actual survey really gives you better information, because that was not our purpose.
Yes, Anne.
And then, just to follow up, is this a pretty secure system of the poll so people couldn't go three times for the same thing, for example? Because that's possible on certain sites.
Yep.
So, was the place secure that way?
Yeah. Basically, if you try it from your computer, it won't let you do that. If you are the first one down to the Blue Monday and use their computer, then you could have done it twice. And then, if you went to the library and were the first one from one of those computers, so
That'd be a lot of running around.
Yeah. It's not that big. If you were going to win some money, it might be worth it.
Yeah. Well, I think that, you know, we use, just Survey Monkey was the online tool that was used, and so it does have those built-in protections to limit, in a technical way, the ability for people to access the poll from more than one, from the same computer twice. Julie?
I have a question about the actual cost of each of the tablets. So, if the motion were to carry tonight and we were to get the approval, you had the approval to move forward, and you were to, at some point, need to sign the lease, and then between the time you sign the lease and the time we were actually getting delivered of the, the delivery of the tablets, if the price should change, just because the market is going to probably be doing lots of things, and if it were to lower, would we be able to benefit from that?
We would like to believe that we would do everything we can to allow us that flexibility. I think a key piece is that we're going to have to look at what's the actual date that we enter into the, we cannot take delivery or pay for any of this until July 1. There's a number of reasons for that, largely because the money that we're looking for comes out of next, you know, begins with next year's budget, which doesn't begin until July 1. Number two, as important of a point as that, is just the mechanics of it and the fact that we want the lease to end on June 30th, because obviously, if we were to sign a lease in March and they would deliver the equipment to us, we don't want three years from now us to have to send back the equipment in mid-March. That wouldn't serve anyone well. So, if you recall, I was a neighboring district, and I believe it was, I'm not going to say which district it was, but I know it was one of the neighboring districts who was ahead of us in this particular curve. They were very fortunate that when they had already approved their lease or purchase last year, that very soon thereafter, Apple came out with a different device and dropped the cost of the iPad II by about $100. And so, they were able to capture that savings. So, the other piece, we'll be looking to negotiate as part of the lease that if they're, and I don't know if this is even possible or not yet, we'll be checking into that for you in the next, you know, couple of days here, in terms of, if the price were to go down in, say, May, and we've already signed the lease, can we write it in to where we would get the cost at that time? No, from a company's perspective, they, you know, may not like that particular piece. But it also, we can hold off on signing the lease until a point where we're comfortable that we've seen all of the different price discounts come out. Apple has been somewhat predictable over the last several years in terms of certain times of the year where they've announced pieces. But it is, it is a risk that once we sign the lease, that if a price drop were to happen, we may or may not be able to take advantage of it. Where if we hold off on actually signing all the documentation and those pieces, that we would be able to take advantage of it.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Rob?
Well, you know, I've got a lot of questions.
Absolutely. We're happy to talk about it.
So, yeah, I've met with Matt quite a bit, and he's been very patient with my questions, and I just wanted to go over a couple of things again.
Absolutely.
One is the idea of bring your own device, which we've talked about as an alternative model to this. In your presentation, you have, the longer presentation, you have a quote from Ian Jukes, who's an educational technology guru
He is, yes.
Who says that, "We need to prepare students for their future, not our past." So, I've been thinking about that a lot, because that's kind of the core of what this is about, I suppose. So, my question is, will their future involve being handed an iPad? Or will it involve making their own technology choices and working in an environment where people have made different choices and they have to adapt to a variety of different devices? According to a report about three weeks ago in Business Insider, "Almost 90% of IT departments worldwide support BYOD with the US in the lead." The report concludes that it's only going to increase, and I'm just wondering why we don't do a community survey to find out what devices and technology students already And why don't we empower them to think of their own devices that are already personalized and customized themselves as educational tools, so they would use their own smartphones or their own tablets? And instead of duplicating a lot of that technology to focus the resources on students who don't have the technology, but make use of the customization that we already have with students' own devices?
I will certainly give a thorough response, and I have to just, I apologize. I'm smiling here as the ninth graders, the next year's ninth graders walk by behind you here, and everybody's looking over the top to see what's going on. So, I just know that my smile is about seeing that exuberance for kids coming to high school next year, as well as this, of course, but that just makes me smile. Bring your own device is actually how this whole discussion got started, in terms of, we started talking about the network infrastructure that we would have in terms of supporting a potential bring-your-own-device scenario. And as we got into looking at bring-your-own-device at this point in time, I'm going to just take a step back. Does giving an iPad to a student look at their future in terms of how it would be mimicked in business or in their workplace? And I would agree that there are a number of businesses that are certainly supporting bring-your-own-device. However, I think that my take would be that they're still in concert with the equipment that their company has purchased, though a number of companies are going to that, you bring your own stuff. In fact, there was a recent interesting post that Doug Johnson, Mankato Area Schools Director of Education and Technology posted about thinking about, should we just not buy any computers in schools anymore and, you know, give the staff an allowance each year to make a purchase? Now, that's ahead of its time. That's the only post I've ever seen on that for a number of reasons. But there is that piece out there. And bring-your-own-device strategy, when you couple that, I still think that you're seeing companies who, and in business, where they do have a defined device that people have typically at their desk today. I think that that's going to change. The bring-your-own-device strategy at a school has many potential, or has many pros, and you really very articulately wrote those on your blog over the weekend, talking about that there is a significantly reduced cost to schools. We don't pay for any of the hardware, or most of the hardware, anyway. It also provides the opportunity for students to personalize the device that they use. In fact, in some elementary schools where they've started a bring-your-own-device pilot, can you guess what the number one device that kids bring to school to access the internet? Not, good effort. Good effort, no. What we're hearing is Nintendo DSI, because those small devices have a web browser. Now, obviously, that's not a significant, there are limitations to that device, but that's what kids sometimes bring, because that's the device that they have that has internet capacity. As we looked at bring-your-own-device in this district, one of the concerns that we had initially is, is we start to change the way that teachers teach and students learn. When we're asking teachers to change the way that they distribute information from a paper-based system to a digital-based system, we've had a core value that we thought it was fair to let teachers know that what I create in general, if I can show it on the device that I have, is going to be presented in a similar way to the students in the class. And I think that while certainly students are, we've said all along, they're very savvy, and many of them could probably find a way around it, what we want to try to do is minimize, we want to try to minimize those opportunities to where the items that teachers create are showing up differently on students, on different student devices. I wouldn't rule out the down the line. We may not come back to you and say, "Okay, we started this one-to-one project, and now things have matured enough to where our staff is really savvy at using all of the other pieces." And I think that that piece of making sure that it's presented the same on all devices is no longer really an issue. We may come to you, maybe even as early as the next lease, and say, "We're ready to do a bring-your-own-device because the market has changed enough where kids can afford their own," and those kinds of pieces. But while I certainly support bring-your-own-device initiatives, and frankly, we may even open up our district's policy to allow students to bring their own devices in conjunction with their iPad if they so choose. If a student has a laptop and they prefer to use that to type their own papers and use the iPad as the textbook, why would we prevent them from doing that? We think that it's got an opportunity to possibly work in conjunction initially as opposed to an either-or. But your concerns about duplication of equipment are important. We also do worry about the people who, the haves and the have-nots, in terms of how to support those students whose families can't afford it, though. We know that if you were to look at the high school, I would venture to guess the large majority of students in our mayor's youth council, people, do most of your friends have some kind of cellphone that can access the web? Most everybody? So, that certainly is a fair point, that they do have access to those kinds of pieces. I think that we just have a concern of making sure that teachers are supported, and the curriculum that they generate, at least to begin with, is something that they can rely will be demonstrated the same on as many different devices as possible. Is that, did I miss any of your, I tried to get as much as I could on the
The thing, I guess I would reinforce too, is that I think in doing this, and Matt has shared this on a couple of different occasions. I know, you know, we've gotten a catchy title with transformational technology. This is really about changing learning and teaching. And I think And I think when you're asking to do both pieces, when you're asking not only to use the technology, but you're really saying to teachers, you're gonna be thinking about a different way of, of providing instruction to students. And you're gonna ask students to respond to you and interact with you in a different way than they've done before. Our initial concern is that right now, we're not far enough along in, in that process to be able to guarantee that if somebody comes with a Galaxy, a Samsung Galaxy, or somebody else comes with an other Android device, or somebody comes with an iPod, or somebody comes with that, that we're gonna be able to have the kinds of things that we want, which are including things like making sure that planners are on the devices, making sure that students can access homework that's generated by teachers or quizzes or other materials that they wanna be able to share, and that they can get them back to the teacher in the same format that they've been created. That we can do quizzes and other kinds of pieces on the technology, that we can access all of the apps, all the digital textbooks, all the other materials. That we can have some control of the, of the devices when they're in our schools and being used in our schools, in terms of the management software, in terms of the, the internet protection software. There's some things that is, that when you blow it open into that BYOD format, you really make that much, much more difficult to do. And yes, I think there may be a point, Rob, when that will be the norm. I don't think we're quite there yet, but I guess what I don't wanna have happen is I don't want teachers and students to wait another several years trying to get to the point where BYOD has matured far enough to make that possible and not make use of the technology opportunities that we have right now and the learning changes that I think we can create right now. And, and I guess that's why I think it makes sense to move forward in the format we're in, as opposed to trying to hope that we can make it all fit together with a variety of different devices that may or may not connect effectively.
I think you'd ask, have we surveyed students in general about their, we have not, in terms of, I think that our, our qualitative piece in terms of just watching students on a daily basis at the, at the high school, certainly, I think the large majority of students are coming with some kind of device in their pocket. And then we, I think we would see that less at the middle school. You know, just because of the age of the students, many parents have not, you know, started to provide that opportunity. I think that really what you see is when kids start to get involved in activities, is when we start to see the cellphones, because then they can easily call home and make sure that there's that connection. I don't have any data to support that, that's my, that's my observation.
And then I was just wondering if you, I mean, Dr. Richardson last time said that if Northfield can't afford to do it, then no one can. So I'm wondering about this quote, which I've seen from Steve Butner at Edina, who says, "One-to-one computing is financially unsustainable." Now, with Edina, which as we know is very referendum-friendly and has a lot of money, if they're saying it's financially unsustainable to do one-to-one computing, then that raises some questions in my mind.
And I think the article that you and I, you had mentioned to me in terms of, and I really appreciate that, that article that included Steve's comments, and I specifically looked at laptop computers in terms of that particular component. I've not talked to Steve, so I can't say for sure if that was the same component, if they were to look at tablets, but I do believe if you, I've said this in the past, we wouldn't have proposed laptop computers. There's a number of issues of the one-to-one, in my opinion, with laptops, including the, the higher level cost in, in terms of being able to get a device that can last the battery the entire day, those kinds of pieces. So I would completely agree with him in terms of a notebook scenario, a laptop notebook scenario, that I, I certainly don't believe that we'd be able to propose something like that. So I don't know if there's enough nuance there between his thoughts on?
It looks like he, that Edina started out with a one-to-one laptop program.
Correct, yep.
Got rid of it because it was too expensive. And now they're doing a tablet program that's not a one-to-one, they're doing the?
The BYOD, yep.
Bring your own device, yeah. So they learned, it looks like they learned from the laptop program that they couldn't sustain it, so they decided not to do it with the tablets either.
And I think that, I, I think that every school district situation is slightly different and what we've said is that we believe that the district can look to fund this for as far as we can see into the future, but we also have said, been very clear, that we didn't think this was going to be cheaper. We also have said, as you all know, that the further that we look out in any kind of financial projection, which really is beyond a couple of years, it gets murkier. And so what we, as far as we can see reliably into the future, which is a few years ahead here, we believe that this is something that we can handle within certain parameters as we, as we've discussed before. So I, I can't speak to what Steve's comments were and I, I should have called, you know, I think I might have mentioned I should have called him and I didn't, I didn't have a chance to call him last week, but I certainly can do that and get some clarification on his comments about that. But at the same time, I think you've also seen a number of other districts, such as Farmington, who is rolling out, you know, iPads to all of their students in that district, and they're purchasing them or leasing them. You've got Watertown Mayor, Lassure Henderson, I think there's also a number of larger districts or, a number of districts, I wouldn't say larger, but a number of districts who have chosen the same strategy that we're looking at. So yes, I think there's a number of bring your own device schools, but I think there's also a number of districts who have looked at this and said that making sure that each student has a similar device is, is an important piece.
Julie, you have something?
I just, I don't know. You had a lot of very interesting quotes up there. I mean, so a quote I found from a computer and information scientist, who is a critic of the one laptop per child program in developing countries. He's, his name is Kentaro Toyama. He says, "Without good teachers, education fails. With good teachers, education succeeds. Technology is largely irrelevant to this equation." And he points out that the claims you make for iPads, for example, that they're interactive, teachers are interactive, they're engaging, so are teachers. They're adaptive, so are teachers. And we have so many requirements of teachers. We added, we, we have all these new requirements for dealing with student assessment data. And we have RTI, and we have PLCs, and so many sort of professional development pieces are being added on to then say, oh, and by the way, transform your pedagogy with technology on top of that and redefine things without having a lot of, you know, making, having them be their own academic technologists, not, not paying them a lot more to suddenly have to deal with all this technology. I just, it seems like we're adding so many different pieces to what a teacher's job description is, when the core of their, their job is basically to do the things that an iPad does. I mean, I see Mark sitting there and I know he likes his iPad, because I've talked to him about it, but when I, my son came home from St. Olaf last week and I said, what do you think of this? And he said, "Oh, teachers like Mr. Thornton don't need iPads." So I think, you know, what we need to do is focus on the teacher's strengths and not get a lot of distraction from these. And, you know, I have, I know there are teachers who are very supportive of it and I think that it's absolutely a great assistive technology in special education. I think that it works, I've seen it work really well in RTI interventions, but I think, I, I think that teachers should be, should be given the choice about whether they want to have to transform their pedagogy through this. And that maybe a pilot program that gets these things into the hands of the really enthusiastic teachers who can transform with, from within, instead of saying, everybody's gonna go through the Sanger model. To me, that just focuses the resources where they're gonna provide the most transformation and provide models for people, rather than kind of diffusing these resources out there where some teachers are gonna just put them in the drawers and not wanna, wanna use them. So, I mean, that's kind of where I'm sitting right now.
Well, I, and I, I think anyone who's spent five minutes with me knows that, that this is, we've always said this is a learning initiative. The first of many reminders about forgotten quotes, yes. I could not agree with you more that teachers are the only thing that matters when it comes to the classroom, but I also think that's the human resources part of my job and we're passionate about making sure that our district has the best and the brightest to teach the best and the brightest. And we really think that we've got a special place here and our human capital is our number one concern, always, there's no question about it. I also think providing those really great teachers with the tools that they need to be able to deliver the curriculum that they're teaching is an important component as well. So I would never say that, in fact, history would tell us that technology can never replace good teachers, but it can certainly open the door for good teachers to do great things with students. And I would never say that technology is better than teachers. How many times I've ever spoken to people, would never, ever even begin to say that, but I think that good teachers who have access to the good tools, like Eleanor Doan says, can do really remarkable things with students. So I, and I certainly also wanna recognize that people will develop at different rates. We've said that all along, we, that's the purpose of the four-year implementation, because this is a huge piece pedagogically, to be able to transform this kind of piece in one year, when we've tried to say all along, this is not a light switch. You know, this is something that we anticipate being a several-year process, and I joked with some of you, half jokingly, that I view this as a 10- to 20-year piece. And if you think about how education has transformed over the years, that's not unreasonable in terms of thinking about how things shift in K-12. So, you know, Rob, you and I have had great discussions, and I just, I, I am better for the discussions that you and I have had in terms of clarifying my thinking on these pieces, and I really respect your opinion and the fact that you've put so much thought into this and provided a lot of opportunities for me to think from different angles about it. So I, I do really appreciate the discussions that we've had in terms of, as we, and I know that we, at the end of the day, might have a differing opinion and, and I'm okay with that, that's, that's why we're here. So I appreciate the discussion.
And I know I've shared with you before and shared with Matt and I think with anybody else that was listening, maybe, or maybe even people that didn't wanna listen.
Yeah.
But, you know, I have some really strong feelings about the pilot strategy. My, my, my great concern there is that especially when, when you're looking at a pilot strategy at the secondary level, the, the concept of saying, give, give the technology to the teacher and to the students who are interested in doing that, now, now you have a, a building where you've created a million silos. And, you know, the whole, one of the purposes, I think, if we looked at PLCs and RTI, has been to break down those silos and to get people to work and collaborate across their, their own curricular areas as well as the other curricular areas. The, the issue is, if, if we were to do a pilot strategy at the secondary level where we have a teacher that has the technology and the, those materials, what happens when that student moves to the next class? And that teacher's chosen not to do something. Now we have the student with, with the iPad that they could still take notes with, no interaction, no textbook, no, you know, significantly modified opportunities to get information and ideas and to share those. I, I just can't see how a pilot strategy at the secondary level can work. And, you know, I, I guess folks know how important, I believe, is the concept of collaboration. I want to see all of our teachers, the very best and those that are still working to be the best, to, to move forward. And to do that, I think it happens because teachers are working with each other, students are working with each other, students are providing good quality pressure to staff to say, how can we take this to the next level? How can we move it where it needs to go? And teachers are able to go to each other to say, you know, I'm looking at this piece, what else could I do that could even make my instruction more powerful? My sense is a pilot takes us, I think, backwards in terms of all the things that we've tried to do over the last decade, in terms of, of PLCs, in terms of the RTI approach, all the things we've tried to do that in terms of collaboration. So I, I understand and I think I could maybe even make pilots work at the elementary level where kids stay, would stay in a room and would, would only interact with the other students in the room. I just cannot, in my head, I can't get around what a pilot would look like at the secondary level that would really provide a powerful opportunity for the student to have that technology and use that technology through the day, nor would we get the interaction that I would hope that we have between teachers as we move forward. And I think our teachers, yeah, you know, not every teacher's in the same place, and I absolutely agree with you. We've got someone like Mark Thornton who says, "Bring it on, give me the technology, I can do lots of different things with this that really enhance my ability to share information about American history and bring it alive and look at the primary sources and all the things that I can do that I can't necessarily do with a textbook in front of me." And we have other teachers that, that are struggling, that some of them are afraid. This is new technology, this is change. But I think that the chance to move that forward is going to be much stronger if we're having staff going together and working with it, and we're having students expecting every teacher to be on their game and work in that process. And I think the alternative is that you end up with people being able to retreat to that silo and not change. And I think that's, that's not a good way to go. The other thing, and we haven't even gotten to this yet, Mark, but as we move into the new evaluation process, my expectation is that we're going to be, as part of that evaluation, we're going to be looking at staff members in terms of how they use technology on a daily basis with their students. And it would be very appropriate to do that. We, we obviously can't do that if one person has the technology and their class has the technology and the person in the room next door has nothing.
No, I think it's important to note too, that we've tried to be real careful about saying that even with this strategy, people aren't, wouldn't be expected to be, every minute that they're in class, you know, having students use their iPad. It's a tool, like any other tool, and it's, we're hoping that it replaces and expands, you know, a number of tools. But, you know, the fact is that you will walk by classrooms where there are many other things going on. It's, it's a resource for the classroom that has many other potential options, but we've certainly never espoused that every minute of every day, you know, students in the sixth through 12th grades would be using that every minute. That's not fair, that's a lot of pressure to put on teachers, they have to use every minute of every class period. That's not going to be the case. It will certainly be used throughout the class period and more on some days than others, because there's still gonna be great group discussions, there's still going to be other kinds of simulations, there's still gonna be some direct instruction, lots of direct instruction. All of those other kinds of pieces that go through, our hope is that we move forward and provide just another resource for those teachers. But I, I just think it's fair to say too, that we're not expecting people to use it all day, every day. That, that just isn't possible and it wouldn't be, that wouldn't be appropriate to expect people to use it all day, every day.
Anne?
I just wanna add that with this discussion going on, and I think it's so smart that you have the idea that we lease these, because we might learn that there, after this lease, there's something else that we'd rather have than that, the iPad, and I just think that's been?
Or nothing at all. It's very possible that, you know, a BYOD strategy on a second lease is something that is very possible, but it gives you the flexibility. We've talked about a number of decision points, and really to, to not be Pollyannaish, it would be more difficult, once you get going, to go back to nothing, you know, in terms of, certainly recognize that. But the board does have decision-making pieces every so many years with this kind of strategy.
Julie?
Well, I wanted to comment to, to Rob that, you know, I certainly understand, you know, your position on this, but I think one of the reasons the board went forward last year in proposing and approving all teachers to have an iPad for this full year is that they would, in fact, have an opportunity to get, become more comfortable with the technology and get in the mindset of, a year from now, how, how might I teach this lesson? And I believe that there are districts who just rolled it out, both staff and students at the same time. So I think we tried to lay some, some careful groundwork with our staff to understand the technology. So I think we tried to lay some, some careful groundwork with our staff to understand the technology and be reinforced with boot camps. And I think the other piece is the SAMR model, which I think very carefully, you know, lays out a course for the teachers to gradually become, um, you know, to use that, um, over the course of, we have said very risk, very realistically, several years in terms of how they would escalate the use of it and the complexity and, and how it would, um, be utilized in their, their curriculum. So, um, while I understand certainly your hesitation there, I guess I support the, um, the proposal in part because of the fact that we know the teachers have had time to use it and we, and the, the strength of the SAMR model, which gives them time to, to develop and to understand the technology and to be supported by that, actually. There's going to be strong levels of support, um, for them. They aren't going to be just given it and, and that's it.
Rob, do you?
Well, I'm just again wondering about the support though, because I mean, if you are at St. Olaf or Carlton, for example, and you want to use an iPad in your class, you have a staff of academic technologists who help you research the apps and train you with, on the apps and help you develop good projects to get the most out of this technology. And teachers are going to have to be doing that all by themselves. And you're going to have tech boot camps and stuff, but I mean, it's not like you're going to have someone who's going to be able to come in and work with them individually to, to understand this and find the best uses. And I mean, so I think like the, the model in Roseville, the pilot model, which was to develop a project and apply to implement it. And then if your project is chosen, you not only get the iPads for your class, for your project, but you also get an extra $500 stipend to sort of compensate you for all the extra work you're going to have to do to do the research on the apps and train yourself on all those things. So I, I just think it's just so much added time that has to go into this without a lot of extra support. I mean, you obviously give a lot of support and, I mean, the one, the, the main positive thing I've gotten out of this, I suppose, is that I'm really impressed with you and all, and the leadership you've given.
Thank you.
I just, not everybody has that passion and is going to spend that extra time getting the best use out of it. And so I, I think focusing those resources and getting people to model it. I mean, isn't that what happened with RTI? You, you hired RTI coaches to model the interventions and you weren't expecting everybody to be doing it all at once, but you had sort of master teachers who were, say, showing you what could be done with this new approach. I mean, it seems like you could do the same thing, have some teachers who are really passionate about this to become leaders from within rather than saying, here, everybody now follow this AMR model.
No, and I, I think while we don't, you're, you're certainly going to be straight that we, at this point, don't have any academic technologists, uh, positions proposed or anything like that. But we, at the secondary level in the one-to-one areas, uh, we do have full-time media specialists. We do have a full-time technician and a full-time media assistant. And our hope is that the media center becomes, um, you know, the focal point of that. Now, they have other duties to do it. I'm not going to say that, you know, that's going to be their, all they do. But we certainly are looking to our media specialists and secondary buildings to be supported as well as our technicians, who in this case at both of our buildings, the technicians, in fact, one of our technicians has a master's degree in training and development. And in the other, uh, at the middle school, our, our technician has had a long-time, uh, career in school technology and really functions very much, uh, as an integrationist as well in terms of helping train teachers. I think the other component to, uh, to look at with that is that we recently in January had a, um, staff training day. And half of the day was for technology. And I'm just going to, Mark, I think all of this stuff at the high school, so there was probably what, 10 different sessions roughly?
Six to eight probably.
Okay, six days. So over the couple hours of six to eight different sessions, none of which were taught by technology staff. I don't, all taught by our own teachers. As with our tech boot camp over the summer, as we moved forward with that, we have really been trying to be organic in terms of growing our leaders and the fact that the first tech boot camp, I think I taught every one of the classes or might've had a couple of people. And then as we've continued forward, my leadership of that has reduced because the greatest thing I can give to the district is to get other people to step up in front of their colleagues and share that. Now, that's not their job and they're not getting paid directly to do that on a daily basis. But I do believe that, um, when we grow those, we don't have just pockets, you know, of wow. Our goal is to try to, to grow the entire staff together. And so I think we have really tried to empower our staff members, everyone, to contribute to that in a larger way. It certainly isn't as focused, directly focused as an academic technologist, as you would say. And, uh, certainly have met, you know, a couple of the folks from St. Olaf and Carlton, they're very impressive. Other districts do hire, uh, technology integrationists or technology coaches. That is something that other districts have done. We're not proposing that as part of this at this time, though with our reorganization, uh, we do have some, if we don't, but we need to address technology leadership in the next couple of weeks or I will be a puddle and a floor somewhere with, uh, the additional responsibilities that I have now been, uh, given the privilege of undertaking. So we do have some flexibility there, though we're still deciding what's the best way to go on that. So I certainly acknowledge that we've not proposed hiring coaches or integrationists or those kinds of pieces. But I think our effort to grow those people happened several years ago when we started the tech boot camp strategy and have really tried to encourage and empower people to, to think of themselves as both a, a teacher and a person who can look at technology and assist their, therefore, their neighbors and those kinds of pieces with it. We don't want to have it, I would like to have an entire area where there's several people who can do it as opposed to, you know, one or two people in an entire district, which is probably what we could afford.
Why don't I share, I had a couple of questions this week too. So why don't I share with the board the questions that I had? And, um, I talked to Dr. Richardson and then Matt sat down with me too. And one of them was similar to what Rob was talking about. So I was focusing on literature, on diffusion of innovation and educational change and looking at what we had and, and what causes change to happen and how could we make sure that change happened? And the two areas that I had questions about, one was, um, similar was how, how to foster, recognize and value the teachers that, um, are, are excited and may want to go all the way to redefinition in, if you're thinking about the SAMR model. And talking to Dr. Richardson and Matt about, I actually, where I appreciate Carlton and St. Olaf's academic technologists, when you look at change, you really want to foster it from, um, from the grassroots as well. You can't just have it coming from, um, top-down, but from the people who under, you know, are doing their own curriculum. So we had good discussion about, and some of those things I recognize, that until we make a decision to move forward, you really can't think about what kind of plans and, and how to make that happen. But looking at some of the things that have happened, like you were just sharing about, how you've already had these people that have become champions in terms of what they're doing with their training to each other and becoming that, um, kind of champion within their group. And so it sounds like that's not something that you can make plans for until we, we would make the decision to move forward. But it sounds like we've already got some of the good groundwork to have that opportunity and to continue to recognize and value that, um, in different ways. And then the second piece is, I was looking at this not as much, you know, it's, it's certainly a tool for teaching, but I was looking at the student learning piece of it, um, and really thinking about that. And my concern was that students are very technology savvy, but, um, you know, I don't have Mr. Thornton at home teaching my kids. I, I only have him at school. So how can I have that tool help with that? How can my kids be their very best teachers that they can be for themselves outside of the classroom? And so we had a good discussion about that they wouldn't just be checking out the iPad, that, that if we were to move forward, there would have to be some plans in place for not just, um, boot camp for the teachers, but for the students. And, you know, we had a good discussion about how.
And for the parents.
And for the parents. And the first day of high school, you know, is a great opportunity when there's, you know, there's a lot of time built in for some of that kind of thing. But yeah, and then also the parents and, and that might be tying Erin into. But, so I guess those were the two things that I had discussions about. And it seems like if we were to move forward, those would be areas that we would be closely looking at.
So other questions? John?
I didn't have a, I didn't have a question, but I did just want to kind of comment about this because when, when this was initially proposed, I admit, I was pretty skeptical about the idea. And Matt sort of talked me into it and I, I even bought an iPad myself to try and figure it out over the last year and, and see what I thought about. I do think there are limitations with the technology, but I think it's not about, uh, it's, it's not about how the teachers use it. It's about the, the facility for the students. And I think that's to me, the, the benefit of the, the one-to-one model for the, for the older students. And one of the things that I've thought about from the beginning in this is that when I was a student in Northfield Schools, it was not unusual for to have, for us to have textbooks from the 40s and 50s, which even when I was in school was an awfully long time. And if you think about, if there was an American history textbook that was only 20 years old, it would still say that Andrew Johnson was the only US president to be impeached. And that's the kind of, you know, non-updated information that, uh, I think that the, the, the technology piece brings to the students. And having the textbooks that can be updated, the eBooks and e-textbooks, I think is where I see the, the most benefit. Uh, I think there are issues in terms of, of there just being games and, and things, but I think that they are all, they have all been addressed or to a great part addressed in the, in the proposal. And I think there are, certainly there are issues that will come up that may not have been anticipated or may not have been anticipated in the way that they could have been. But there are, I, I think this is just a tremendously thorough proposal and I've been impressed with it all, all along. And I think, uh, you know, as I said from the beginning, I, I've been skeptical but willing to listen. And after listening to it for, for all this time, I think that this proposal, uh, covers a lot of the, the issues and it may not be perfect, but, uh, there may be things that will be improved and, and will change as we go along. But I think that this is certainly a proposal worthy of consideration.
Carrie?
I bought myself an iPad too, just because I thought if we're going to ask teachers to do this, I need to take a stab at it myself. And unlike John, I'm not comfortable bringing it to meetings that I still do my paper. You know, for me, this is not an if kind of question, it's really a when. And, um, I guess I'm ready to, to move forward on it now because, um, I just don't know that we're ever going to be more ready. You know, I think there's a point where you just have to take the plunge. And we've given the teachers a year to get comfortable with it. I think the SAMR model addresses a lot of the, uh, really important concerns that Rob raised. You know, as I say, I'm not a, a techie comfortable kind of person, but, um, I think we've got to prepare our kids for the world that they're going into. And this is where they're going to be. And, you know, it's probably going to be a different device and, you know, it, it will change. And I think maybe we will get to the point where we have, you know, a kind of a bring your own device. But, but, but right now, I think for everybody to have the same device, to have a very concrete set of expectations for all of our staff and all of our students for, um, appropriate use of the, of the technology and, um, bring staff along at a pace that I think, um, even I could be comfortable with, you know? But that, that is one thing I think is really important is to communicate early and often to our faculty what the expectations are and how they're going to be measured on meeting that SAMR model. And I know we've talked about that. I, I think because we've moved more slowly than some other districts, that's kind of been like a mini pilot for us, being able to kind of study what some of those other districts have, have done and what the, what the pitfalls have been. And it is very hard for me to see how, how you could do a, a pilot. Normally I kind of like that idea, but this is so different than just putting a SMARTboard in every room. It's, it really changes the whole way that, that students and teachers interact with information. And so I think it would be unfair, I think, to faculty and to students to, um, have some of them have it and others not. I think then you've really created a very disparate learning environment. I, I'm kind of jumping all over the map here, but I do want to say that I'm very appreciative of the very conservative financial estimates that you've given us.
We continue to lose sleep over making sure that we've got everything in there. But, and I think that will, the loss of sleep will continue for many, many more months here, yes.
Well, but I, I think it's, I think it's important to, to, um, you know, so many other districts have kind of overstated the potential savings. I think, I think we will probably see some savings. But, you know, one of the things I would ask is that we, that we do get updates over how much we're spending out of the general fund and how much is being shifted to capital. And then also, um, savings that we're seeing as well as any unanticipated expenditures that we're seeing. And then as we do with our insurance, you know, kind of a, an update on what the, what the loss ratio is and how we think that's playing out, is that $25 is the right, is the right amount? And I'm assuming there's going to be an angel fund for students who.
We have not officially established that yet, but we will absolutely work toward doing that, just like we have with other fees in the district.
The, the other thing that I.
But we do have the, the set, well, again, with the 25, 15, 10.
Twenty, twenty-five, 20 and 15.
20 and 15, so that we do have the setup to, to do that piece. And I guess in the same way, we've looked at it with the activities account. And I know, you know, activities, fees, and I know there was some concern last year about that. We actually end up, ended up this year with, we have more students participating in co-curricular activities than we ever have had before. And, uh, we've been able to work that out very nicely with those individuals that got the reduced fee. But the idea of everybody having some commitment to, um, you know, that involvement, I, in the same way, I think it's important that when you hand a $379 device to a student, that you're saying to them, there's an expectation that this is taken care of and maintained. Does, it does, I think, help to have some skin in the game in terms of that insurance, so, yeah. No, and I absolutely understand and we will work to, we will work, we will work to get that done. But we, I just would say to you, we did, you know, I know there was some real concern last year from the board and I had just talked with Tom to say what's happened there. And Tom said, it has not had any negative impact on the student participation. And in fact, our numbers are going up.
Well, that's, that's very good to hear.
Good.
Um, the, the other thing I would ask, um, is that we get an update on very concrete, again, curriculum. Who's going to be teaching our students how to use the apps, how to download them, how to? Because again, I've been playing with mine and I'm having trouble using notability on documents, you know?
We invite you to one of our trainings, yes.
I, I will be there, but, but, you know, I think to, to, I know kids are really tech savvy and all of that, but to assume that kids with all the different kinds of social pressures that they live with at different points in their middle school and high school years are all going to be learning from each other, I think is, is, that's not a realistic strategy. We have to be very deliberate about how we, how we make sure every kid is getting.
You're asking for a strong multi, multimodal method of sharing, whether it be, you know, a digital handout, they can get a video live, you know, multiple resources so that they have the ability to not only hear it, but also go back and look at it in different ways, access other materials to help facilitate their own learning. That's, I think, what you're, what I'm hearing you ask for.
And that there's a teacher, that there's a caring professional adult in their lives who is responsible for making sure that they are acquiring those skills. So they can use that device that we're providing them. I guess that's, that's what I've got. I mean, again, for me, it's, it's not a question of whether to do it, it's when to do it. And I think we're as well positioned to do it now as we will be.
I just want to, we will not be perfect with this, right? We, it will not be for a lack of trying. I can, I think that you all know, we leave this all on the field. We don't leave any of it in the locker room when we try to do these things. So, uh, there, there will be, you know, there will be some disruption, there will be some, there would be some messiness. This kind of disruptive change does involve, I, I've always been, we've always been very straight about that, but I want to reiterate it again, that, um, there will be things that go way better than we thought. There were things that will go way worse than we thought. But that's the nature of any large change like this. And we've just really tried to be as transparent as we can with our thoughts about this in terms of not trying to, despite the fact that I look at the world through rose-colored LASIK surgery now as opposed to glasses, but.
Rose-colored LASIK.
Rose-colored LASIK. The fact is that, um, we've tried to tell you the good, the bad, um, look at a lot of. The fact is that we've tried to tell you the good, the bad, look at a lot of different angles. So know that, I think, and John, I appreciate what you said, that it's not perfect, but I think it's, it's certainly, we've had a lot of discussion to get it to the point where it's, I think, in a good spot.
No?
Maggie, I think, I missed the job communicating this to the community and to us and to the district. Thank you so much. I have two questions, they're probably similar. Will we track serial numbers?
Yes.
And secondly, when the device, during the summer, the device stays at school, right?
The devices will be checked back into school during the summer to begin with. Down the road someday, I hope, that we'd be able to give the opportunity for students to take a device home. But I don't see that happening in the, in the near future, but the idea that we'd have an opportunity to address some of the summer learning issues that we've seen, I think there's some potential there, but we're not anywhere near ready to do that yet. So yes, at the end of the year, initially, they would check them back in, and before we would allow them to stay home for the summer, we would talk about that with you again. My hope would be down the line, but certainly not right away, for sure.
Second question is, do we have the leverage to be able to get them back, you know, during the summer, at the end of the school year?
You know, I, we have a textbook piece that, you know, students check their textbooks in.
Yeah.
And so I would envision that being a very similar method, but I, there may be an opera, I mean, that will be something that may come up, someone who doesn't want to give theirs up. And if that's our biggest problem, boy, I'm, then we're doing good things there. But we will, we will certainly address that on an ad, because we will know who's had it checked out, and we certainly have ways of communicating with folks.
Thank you. Great job.
And, you know, this has been a, it's been fun to be the spokesperson, but there were nearly 100 people involved, staff members in this process over the last year. So it's been a pleasure to be, it's, it's a good arrangement. I get to do the talking and other people do the work, which is really good for me.
Brought a lot of people together.
I like to think so, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Before we take a vote, I wanted to thank Matt for all his hard work. 33 months, is that what you've been working on this proposal?
Uh, no, 12, 12 months, you know, officially, but probably...
It feels like 30.
Yes, there you go, yes.
And thank Mary as well, because you know, a lot of extra time.
Yes, yeah.
So, all right, board members, we have a motion and a second in front of us to go with the superintendent's recommendation, which is to approve the technology transformation proposal dated January 21st, 2013, in front of you, which, as we said, is a three-year lease, 2013, 14 through 2015, 16 school years, including digital curriculum, software applications, so the cost of no more than $550,000 per year, and also authorizing the district to charge the insurance fee, as was outlined. So all those in favor of approving the superintendent's recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Do you need to do roll call?
I was pretty clearly, I hope you're going, but we can. Stramron?
Aye.
Pritchard?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Maple?
Aye.
Bosson?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Hardy?
No.
Motion carries. We are ready to move on to the items in the consent grouping, and I will remind board members there were a few additional personnel items that were added in the table file. Is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent grouping? I need a motion, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent grouping.
So moved.
Moved by Ann?
Seconded.
Seconded by John. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Items for information, we have planning the next steps in the, engaging the community in a calendar conversation. Dr. Richardson, do you want to make your words?
Sure, sure. Obviously, after our discussion over the last several months in terms of looking at some options for the calendar, I think it became very clear that while people were not comfortable with the option that was proposed, that there was still a great deal of interest in thinking about what might be various strategies for the calendar. And I think we even saw in materials that came through, there were some people that were saying, well, maybe a year-round calendar would be better, maybe adding more days to the calendar would be better. Some people that came back and said, gee, if I had known that we were going to stop after the, the first discussion, you know, I'd have come and talked to you. I think our belief is that, while I don't think we're ready at this point to propose any kind of specific alternative, it does make some sense for us to come back and actually have a more global discussion about calendars and schedules, and to get people to really think about and brainstorm, what are the things that would really have, or that they believe would really have a positive impact on student learning. And so what I'm proposing that we take a look at would be the concept of basically inviting all of the folks that had made any kinds of comments to board or others, as well as members of the teaching staff, who have a variety of different opinions, as well as students, and as well as the community at large, and ask them to come together to have that conversation. And I guess I would see this happening over several months. And it really would begin with the first meeting that would be more just kind of taking a look at what's the history of school calendars, you know? What have they looked like in the United States? What were school calendars like in the 1800s? And what were school calendars around the world?
I can speak to that one.
There you go. And you can mean back in the 1800s, you've got, got that piece. And, and so, you know, with, with a focus really on saying, can we sit down and do some brainstorming about, are there some key components that we think would make for the highest quality calendar that would support student learning? And again, not really, you know, pushing any particular agenda in terms of options, but really trying to think about what that looks like. And then as part of that, then determining additional meetings that we might have, where the large group might want it to be involved, or would there be people that would actually, from that initial meeting, be interested in some kind of a work group that could really do some serious brainstorming? The idea being then that if, that, that has legs, that we would have, have either the large group or the, the work group, or both, do some thinking over the next several months about what might be some alternatives or calendar options that people would want to consider, that we'd really kind of look at, what are the parameters that you have to deal with, either from state statute or in terms of, of things that have, have been part of tradition or history, and whether that's, you know, the state fair, or whether it's trips in, in August, or whatever? To really kind of think about, are there some better ways for us to do this? And actually to explore too, a little bit about what's, what's happening in, across the country in terms of those people that are looking at year-round, those people that are looking at just extended number of days, the, I guess now almost 60 districts across the state that are doing before Labor Day start. And, but just trying to get a, a better handle on that. And I think the idea being, you know, this is not about trying to force any particular kind of calendar change, and in the end, we may determine, this is the, you know, what we have is, is the best calendar and really does have the, the most positive impact on our kids, and we should just leave it the way it is. But I do think there was enough discussion and passion and emotion and thought that that came up over the last several months, that it really, it, it would be beneficial, I think, for the district to come back and have that broader discussion. So I'm asking the board to think about that, asking actually to, to think about, if we want to do this, we actually have a date that would, would work to have that initial session. And there actually is only one date, and in the next couple of months it works, and that's March the 7th. But looking at that with, with doing this kind of a broad invitation, getting people to come and getting, you know, folks to, to really sit down and talk about it, we do a two-hour initial meeting. And my other suggestion would be that we use someone that is very involved in terms of teaching and learning, but it's not the superintendent to facilitate the discussion. Because I, I don't want to have this, you know, get derailed in terms of even discussion with the idea that for some reason, individuals would say, well, the superintendent has a particular agenda, a particular approach. You know, I'd like to be involved, but I'd like to be involved as a participant. And, and I could also probably do some sharing of the history, because I did do some research on, on kind of calendars around the, the country and what's been happening there. So I, I guess I'd like to encourage us to take a look at that possibility, and if you're comfortable with doing that, we would move forward with setting up a, a meeting on March the 7th to get that to happen. I, I have gathered, and Danita has been kind enough to kind of put together all of the, the general emails that went to board members, so we have actually a list serve of folks. And I've talked to Mark Thornton, and Mark has indicated that he would be willing to help us draw a pool of teaching staff that could also be involved in that discussion, who would kind of represent the, the wide range of opinions that we have among staff members. But I, I just think it would have an opportunity to give us that time to have that broad discussion, and, you know, maybe at the end of that discussion, we say, hey, you know, what we have is the best we can get. Maybe on the other hand, we find that after that discussion, people say, no, there's, there maybe are some better ways, and we should think about them. But it, it would give us several months in advance of any kind of a, of a deadline to make that happen. And we would kind of play that by ear once we got through the first couple of sessions. So again, I, I'd like you to consider that, and if you'd be willing to do that, I would be happy to work with Danita and Erin and others to go ahead and get this thing set up.
So would you like board members to get back to you in the next few days, and then we'll have as an item for discussion next meeting, or?
Well, here's, here's the issue, I think. If we're looking at March 7th, and it really is, in all honesty, it was the only day until April that you could meet, because, you know, as you know, in the next month and a half, we've got parent-teacher conferences of all different stripes, we've got all sorts of end-of-season activities with various sports. And if we wait until the 25th of February, then we have a very short leash to let people know. If you'd be willing just to give me some direction as a board to do this, I would be happy to go ahead and move it forward. You know, we're not committing to anything other than having that broad discussion right now. But I, I just think it, it might be the opportunity to, to open that back up, but anybody who wants to talk about it, be there to talk about it. And, you know, we, we would, we would do multiple kinds of communications, so not only those people that felt passionate about it before, to have written you an email or sent you a letter or whatever, but also to open it up to the broader community to look at what's there. Because we knew, do know that the data that came out of the petition and the data that came out of the, the survey that was done by our students showed us a very different picture of kind of where people are. Hopefully, we'd have the opportunity to, to talk to a variety of different people in the process.
Carrie?
Well, I like the idea. You know, we said before, we wanted to, to slow the process down, have a long conversation about it, and really engage a broad spectrum of the community. I think it's a good first step. I think it's smart to do it early, you know, rather than late, to get the conversation going. And as you say, see where it goes, and maybe it doesn't go anywhere. But if it is going to go somewhere, then the more time, the better. So we can really flesh it out, and the community has as much opportunity to, to shape whatever changes might or might not come from that kind of conversation. So I would, I would support going ahead at the March 7th.
Is that a motion?
Well, I, I'm just giving it an opinion, I mean, I don't know that we really need a motion.
And I, and I guess that's why we put it here is...
I'm expressing support for the superintendent's suggestion.
Is, I, I don't think it necessarily takes a motion, because, you know, we're not, we're not going into this with the idea of making some kind of decision. But I guess it's, if, unless people are saying to me, boy, this is a really bad idea, don't even think about doing this. If, if the board is, is supportive, I would be happy to move forward with that much of the process.
Does anyone have any? No?
I am very supportive of the idea of the conversation on the 7th, however I have it, but currently I have a conflict and will not be able to be here. But that may also change. There's another meeting going on at the other side of town that I'm not at that is making that decision.
This isn't for you right now.
Any other concerns, Julie?
Well, I agree with Carrie, because there's a lot of things that have to happen between March, between now and March 7th, so I think that, yeah, I support that.
The other piece would be, I know that board members, you have probably had conversations in the grocery store and the coffee shop with, before the last calendar evening. So if there are people that you think that should be, in particularly, you want to get the word out, that it would be, Dr. Richardson has a list of everybody who emailed the board themselves, but if you've got individuals that you think should be really included.
Do we have a site for the meeting at, or?
We, we have a location that is also available. And again, that was part of the, the trick, is that, is that we needed, we needed, and since we have no idea whether we'll get five people or 100 people, we're looking at the upper cafeteria here in this building, because that would give us the, the flexibility if we have a large group to, to work with that process. And if we have a small group, we'll just huddle around a few tables to have a discussion.
7:00 PM?
Would be, be from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock.
Okay. And we would have a Sky Alert or something, it wouldn't just be going out to the people who emailed us?
No, the, the idea is we would also Sky Alert every, every parent in the district with, with a message so that they have that information also.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. The next item for information is the enrollment report, which board members had in their packets.
And I do have one other thing that I'm sure we can...
Did you want to say about enrollment?
Well, I, again, I, I think, you know, you, you are able to watch this each, each month, so you're able to kind of see what's happening in terms of overall enrollments. And again, our numbers are, are maintaining, you know, you know, quite a bit of stability. We, we continue to see that the, the middle schools stay really strong in terms of numbers. And as always, as we move through the school year, we see some reductions in the high school enrollment, but overall, it's very, we're very stable in terms of the overall number and population.
I mean, you have a third item? Oh, sorry, Ron?
Does the C stand for compañeros?
Uh, yes, yes. So, so you can, you can see with, with the class sizes that are on, on the front page, you can see, again, what, what the numbers are. And anything that's got a C next to it would be the compañeros classroom. And that's typically where, if you see differentials in sizes of classrooms, oftentimes, that's driven by the fact that you have the, the, really the equivalent of two different schools operating within the, within the school. And so in terms of balancing enrollment, while we can balance enrollment between the contemporary sections, oftentimes, the compañeros section is what it is. And also as part of that, Rob, when we did the revisions of the compañeros program a couple of years ago, we made the determination to, to start those compañeros programs out as close to 26 or 27 as we could, even in first grade, with the idea that if, if we lost students through the course of the time between there and, and fifth grade, that we'd still keep strong enrollments. That was, had been a problem in the past, where we were seeing sometimes compañeros classes that got very small. But even then, with, with multiple sections, sometimes the compañeros classes are going to drop. The good thing is, is we look at elementaries, though, again, we still have a range of class sizes that are not larger than 28. So again, the advantages of having that contingency dollars has kept those numbers, again, under 30 all the way through. And, and again, if we take a look at our primary grades, you know, many of our primary grades in the 22, 23 range... 23 range.
You have a third item for information?
Just very quickly, we will be getting out a, again, a Skylark message and a news release here within the next day or so. We did interviews for our greeters today, and so we are targeting the 18th of February to be the date that we'll do the changes in terms of locking down of, of additional doors, and setting up the greeter tables and the greeters at the front entrances to each of our buildings. So the, the, the one piece that's going to be more interesting here is we only will have one door unlocked here during the school day, and so the door that oftentimes you come in to come to the district office will not be unlocked during the day. And we can work, we can, we can, well, we can work a couple of strategies there, you can call, and I will come to the door and let you in. I, I think I'm trusted, I, I will check your IDs to make, no, I won't do that, but again, we are really trying to be conscious of, I think, the concerns that staff and parents have had, and trying to make this, this work in the short term. Again, we will be looking at doing some more long-term strategies and changes, yet this spring and definitely this summer in several of the buildings, which may include buzzer systems and camera systems to let people into various buildings, and then some others that will be more long-term in terms of actual construction projects, like at this building, potentially at Longfellow, and at the, at Greenbrough Park, and probably at the middle school, to do kind of the final adjustments that we need to make for those. But again, we, we want kids to be safe, we want parents to feel comfortable that they're safe in our buildings, and I think we feel that this is a good step in terms of helping people to feel like we've got a, a more clear vision in terms of who's actually in the building and not in the building during the day. So that's just coming up, so if people are commenting to you, or, you know, I have the, you know, kind of the, the vision of kind of that first day as kids are trying to get in the district door, or other things that might, you know, where a parent might be upset because they're, they are actually physically locked out of the building and need to have somebody come to open the door for them, you know, we're trying to do this to help support our kids and our parents, and I, it's, it's, it's a tough piece, because we want our buildings to be welcoming, and we want people to feel comfortable coming into our buildings, but we also need to try to make sure that they're safe places for kids. So, all right?
All right.
Other than that, I have nothing else to say.
Okay. Feature meetings, board members, we have Monday, February 25th, and Monday, March 11th coming up. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Noel.
Seconded.
Seconded by John. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned.